And we're going to go to item A of the village manager's report. And we will be hearing from village manager Cassidy and Lance Malina, who is with our attorneys. But I wanted to open this up with a statement so that we could sort of set the ground rules for the discussion. And first, I want to thank everybody for attending tonight's meeting. We know that there are many folks upset by the brick and mortar presence of the business at 512 West Northwest Highway. And I want to assure you that your views will be heard. Let me start off by saying that in addition to the parental concerns many of you have expressed, what we have here is quite personally one of a mayor's worst nightmares. That is, it's a business that many people find at best distasteful, but that is legal and for which no zoning or village board approval is required, nor were there any a priori ordinance or code restrictions to justify a business license denial. Now, I personally had always surmised that we'd encounter this with a restaurant with scantily clad waitstaff who wanted to come in. I won't use any names, but you can imagine what some of those restaurant chains might be. I could never have imagined the situation that we're faced with here today. So, all of us are surprised and amazed, you know, at what we have before us. I don't think anyone on this board anticipated it, nor did any of our prior boards. Our ordinances provide no basis for denial based on the business description submitted with the license application. As Mr. Cassidy will explain, the license was issued prior to any Facebook posts or YouTube videos created by the business owner and associated with this address. We know that the emergence and rampant sharing of those social media posts have raised both the profile of the business and concerns that the submitted business description may not be entirely accurate. We share those concerns and we're following up on them. So what I propose to do tonight is first turn the floor over to Mr. Cassidy and Mr. Malina. And they will explain staff's dealings with the business from the time it was first proposed till today. Following that, the audience will have an opportunity to express its questions and concerns. And this will work best if we follow some rules so that we can have a civil and respectful discourse. So I would ask when it is the audience's turn that you be brief, that you don't repeat either yourself or any prior speakers, and if you can designate a spokesperson to speak for a group of you, that's wonderful. This worked out really well recently when we had a Westbrook School case here. Three parents managed to get the idea of however many people signed their petition across, and it resulted in a very fruitful discussion and a fruitful outcome. So I and the trustees do have a packet of emails and Facebook posts. You can rest assured, nothing goes unseen on the Internet. And so we do have those. They're quite frankly on all sides of the issue. We have received a number of well-written and constructive emails from you, and it would be really great if we could continue in that constructive vein. So again, let's start with Mr. Cassidy and Mr. Malina, and then we'll move to the audience. Mr. Cassidy?
Thank you very much, Mayor. What I wanted to do for the audience and the community watching at home is just kind of outline the process so you understand the history of how we got here as it relates to Tykables at 512 West Northwest Highway. The business owner did come in and requested a business license in February of this year. After an initial review, we were not comfortable with what we were hearing, and we requested a greater detail of how the business would be operated. And we're grateful that the owner complied. In early March, we did get that description of the business use, which would be primarily an office use for online and in-store sales of Tykable products, primarily diapers, but we understand a clothing line is forthcoming. The office would also house oversized items that they would use for display at trade shows. Props on display in the office on Northwest Highway include adult-sized crib, a tricycle, ball pit, rocking horse, as well as a number of different diaper items. The business description indicated that the doors would be locked at all times and sales would be by appointment only. Customers, as we understand it, range from people from those who enjoy the ABDL lifestyle to those with medical issues that result in incontinence, as well as people with special needs, in particular autism and Asperger's. We took this review and our due diligence very seriously, and all of our departments operating within the village looked at this proposal, including the police, the fire department, the health department, as well as our village attorney. And it became apparent to us after reviewing the detailed business outline that we did not have a legal, a rational, or a reasonable basis to deny the business license based on our zoning ordinance. The license was ultimately issued on March 11th, and the business opened in April of 2016. Now, for a permitted use in a zoning district, I want to point out that that does not require a village board approval. So our village board never voted and never saw this, and I'd like to apologize to the board because I never conveyed that this business came in and was issued a license, and that's a clear violation of the no surprises agreement by which we try to operate. So I did want to make that clear, that the board was as surprised as many of you when we started to see some of the posts relative to Tykables. The post that was posted to YouTube and has gone viral throughout our community started to call the question that perhaps the business was operating in a manner outside the confines of our ordinance, as well as his description of the business. We were expressly concerned about having people coming in and utilizing the facility, whether it meant playing with the props or whatever. That was never to be used and was never part of the plan and would in fact be a violation. So we did spend about an hour and a half with the business owner today at the facility, and the owner admitted that some of the statements he made on the video were not rehearsed, they were not scripted, and were outside the confines of the business license. We did ask him to take that video down, and he is reviewing that. He feels it's not necessarily that productive because it can be gotten from many other Google searches and that sort of thing. But he did indicate he would work on that issue and consider it. The owner did agree to remove the colorful Lego-like building blocks from the front of the window and install some sort of a... Currently, there's a temporary sheet up that does provide some screening from the use, but that his permanent thought is to somehow treat the windows so they're no longer... You can't view in. He did state that all employees and patrons are always fully clothed, and that photography is very limited and by appointment only. As stated by the mayor and I think Attorney Malina will state, we still believe that the business is operating in a manner that's consistent with our zoning ordinance, all of our codes, as well as the business description that he provided. Moving forward, we plan to continue to investigate how the business is operating to ensure that it doesn't go off track. We'll also be looking at amendments to our zoning ordinance. That I would ask Lance to cover right now.
Okay, so the legal analysis was presented to me by the Community Development Director, Bill Cooney.
I'm not sure Lance's mic is on.
Not on. Okay. Bill Cooney brought the matter to my attention in...
You're going to have to speak into it.
Okay. Bill Cooney brought it to my attention in late February, early March. I looked at the business. As you may all know, there are businesses that contain elements that some people find difficult to accept in their community, but some of these businesses include conduct that is not only illegal but potentially protected by free expression constitutional precepts. The zoning ordinance and the current business license ordinance, in my opinion, did not regulate this use in any way that it could be denied or not approved as of right. Having said that, I also thought about could regulations have been in place that would regulate this kind of use? Looking at the... And that's why I suggested that if possible, a detailed business plan would be a good idea. Having gotten that, there's nothing occurring in the premises that involve products that are illegal. Things like diapers, oversized toys that would normally be used by an infant but are created and constructed oversized so that an adult might use them are not illegal. And the concept that was proposed about the activity occurring within the square footage of this business, I saw nothing that could potentially be made illegal, given that the wearing of items, whether it's a diaper or it's a... I don't know if many of the board members saw, but there was an image of the celebrity Justin Bieber walking down some sort of right-of-way with a pacifier in his mouth the other day that was out in the public news. That kind of thing is not illegal. It can't be regulated as disorderly conduct, in my opinion. There's no way to create a regulation that would create this business use and make it bannable within any municipality, much less the ordinances that the village had on the books when the license was applied for. I did look at the website of Tykables because the public may or may not know this is an existing Internet business of some significance, which I had no idea. It has an international presence at this point, and the business owner already was selling these products through the Internet, although this was the first bricks-and-mortar store, as he put it in his later video. But business was existing. The business isn't illegal. There are businesses that are normal businesses of products that can be used potentially to support some sort of fetish or other sort of conduct, and this appeared to be one of those, but it didn't make it regulatable, in my opinion, in any meaningful way. So I gave that information to Mr. Cooney. He was able to get the business plan. I looked at that when I got it and said, "My opinion is basically the same." And Mr. Cooney decided he had to issue the zoning certificate, which is a finding that they are in compliance with the zoning use for which that property is owned, as well as a business license so that business could be conducted at that site. And, you know, I mean, I could go on. What Mr. Cassidy alluded to was possible zoning amendments. I would tell the board what's being considered, and which I believe is definitely enactable by the board, is an ordinance that would say that if there was a zoning use that was clearly, in the opinion of the Community Development Director, unanticipated by the existing zoning laws, because we all know that things develop, usages change, that if something is new to the staff that wasn't anticipated by the code, would create a potential conditional use requirement or special use requirement, so that use would have to go before the Planning and Zoning Commission and then ultimately the village board. Having said that, though, I would advise the board that that would definitely make the board more aware of potentially new uses. The board was unaware of this because it didn't rise to the board's level, but it wouldn't give the board carte blanche ability to not approve something that was legal and which was potentially protected by free speech principles. So it would definitely require you to hear, all comment, and that sort of thing, but it wouldn't necessarily allow you to deny it absent some clear impact that could be demonstrated by evidence on the public health, welfare, or safety of the community. So that was my analysis.
Okay, thank you. So we don't have any action before us. We don't have this ordinance change proposal before us. It's an idea that just developed over the last week, and there really is no action for the board to take today, other than to listen to you. So I'm going to let the audience have an opportunity first before we have a board discussion, basically to react to what the audience has to say. So if there are any of you who would care to make a statement, as I indicated, we've read all the emails and phone calls and letters, et cetera, that we've gotten, but if anybody would like to add anything to the discussion at this time, it's your opportunity. I would just ask that you come up to the podium and identify yourself for the record. Okay, we have a lot of interested parties? Okay, yes, sir.
I'm Brandon Richards. Thank you for allowing me to speak. So my biggest concern is the location of the business is so close to a number of homes and schools. It's such a collection of little kids around this area, and I know that's been expressed in the number of emails that you guys have gotten. And, you know, so there's that aspect of it. We talk about the moral aspect of it. I know I can see the look on everybody's face up here. You have a problem with this, and so do I. This is... It's hard for us to swallow in this community. And so I have the moral side of it. I have the safety side of it. I talked about with schools and children being around. I'm also concerned from a property value. I live not far from there. If I go and sell my house and someone says, "Hey, you live down the street from that baby diaper place," I'm not interested in living there. I moved to Mount Prospect because of the community that it is, and this is not the community that I moved to. This is not the value of the community that I moved to. I have a real problem with this. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, I guess this is the sentiment that we're hearing generally. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Jim Baum. I live on the other side where Tykables is in the 100 block of Fairview. I just have a couple of questions. You had mentioned that in the business application, it does mention ABDL, correct?
It does not.
It does not?
No.
Okay. Because I mean, it's clearly the clientele, and we alluded to the video before, and I know you mentioned that he has agreed to take it down, but before I came here, I was able to view it, and it's been on the Internet for at least a few months, inviting people to come to Mount Prospect to play in his store and so forth. So I think in terms of taking it down, I think the damage is done in terms of inviting others who share that type of lifestyle to Mount Prospect. And the other question I have, you mentioned that it's going to be monitored. How is it going to be monitored? Activity within inside the store, you said they're going to keep an eye on it. How's that...
There, I can address that. There are businesses right now that are legal. A good example is the massage parlor concept. Actually, a village cannot ban massage parlors because the profession is now protected by state law, because many municipalities were trying to regulate them in different ways. However, they can be, and sometimes are, harbingers of illegal activity, mostly prostitution. And so while those businesses have to be licensed and exist, they're monitored by checks from time to time by law enforcement authorities. Now there, the activity is done more in secret, so it's more difficult, but a business that is open as a commercial business within the corporate boundaries of the village of Mount Prospect, by signing up for a business license, the applicant agrees to, you know, during normal business hours when they're open, to receive public employees for periodic inspections for whatever reason. And so that would way to determine what's going on in that business.
By periodic, you... What's, once a month, once a week?
Well, it would depend on the use and the circumstance, and also whether there were any complaints. But I don't know, you know, staff resources, I'm not... I'm not into that specific information, but it would be open. The licensee, by applying for a license, and this is true of any commercial license, it's part of the waiver of rights to keep village personnel out and say, "This is my property. You can't come in." By holding yourself out and applying for a license, you agree to allow village employees into your establishment.
So, excuse me, is there a plan in place for the monitoring of Tykables?
There's no written plan to do that, but we're going to utilize and leverage, you know, our staff and all departments to do that. We're going to rely on the neighborhood and, you know, continue to communicate to us if you see anything that is clearly outside the boundaries of the business description.
And I'm sorry, going back to the business plan, was there any language in there that could have been researched to maybe foresee what the intent was more so than... And I'm sorry, after seeing, researching, I have a hard time that there's going to be incontinent senior citizens visiting that store. I mean, it's clearly marketed toward a certain clientele. There was no language within the business plan that would alert you guys to maybe doing some research?
We did all the research. We knew what this was when we did the research.
Let me explain an example. You could have a business that is a fruit stand, for example, that sells vegetable and fruit, and that's what they do. And another business could sell certain vegetables because they become part of some sort of sexual fetish, and they sell the same product, but you know from looking at their Internet presence that that's what they cater to as far as their purchasers or people who come to their store. That's not a basis to deny them a business license, unless the fetish itself is illegal. If the, you know, if it involves human trafficking, or if it involves something that in itself is illegal, you can investigate that and prosecute it, but the fact that the product is tied to some sort of thing that is, you know, unfamiliar and viewed as distasteful by the vast majority of people would not allow you to deny the seller of the product there as opposed to the grocery store where it's not connected that way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for raising the questions. Anyone else?
Hi.
Hi.
Sue McCosky. I live in the neighborhood near the store, in question. Two main things. When a friend showed me the video that has been passed around a lot, clearly showing the purpose of the store, he had to click "Yes, I'm over 18" to view that. So if legally they have to stay there, you know, we can't make them leave, my suggestion is to have a big clear sign, must be 18 and over to get in, and you cannot see inside. Because if you've looked on his website, on his Facebook page, he's making posts saying, "Schedule a free photo shoot in the baby crib." So obviously fetish individuals would come to the location for a photo shoot. I question the judgment of where this business was allowed to go in the first place. Two blocks from an elementary school, a lot of foot traffic, a lot of elementary students, young kids, foot traffic, and I think they shouldn't be able to clearly see inside of anything in that and just label it, label it what it is. That's all.
Thank you for that. I know when I saw the blocks in the window, and they were clearly, by the emails we were getting, attracting kids, you know, to the business. My first reaction was, "Get those blocks out of the window, or cover them up, or something, because it just projects the wrong image." So right now, if you didn't know what was in there, you wouldn't know what was in there right now.
No, no. And giving that impression, knowing what it is and the way that it's... That he is selling or promoting visually the space, as a parent, is very creepy, and it gives you a very pedophile kind of a feeling. And I just think it shouldn't be there.
I will tell you that I have personally not viewed the video because you can't unview it once you've seen it. And there's just no way. I want to have those images in my brain, but I've read about it. If you haven't looked at it, I'd encourage you not to. I mean, and quite frankly, you can delve so far into this fetish that you almost get off track, I think, based on what is supposedly there. And like Mr. Malina said, we're going to try to monitor it. I think you don't want to publish a regular schedule of monitoring. You want it to be a secret so we can kind of catch them, but we can't target the business either, you know? So we have to be very careful. This has clearly got a big "ic" factor to it, though.
To free country, and again, I just, the location, I, as a parent, question the proximity to schools, the proximity to property values were brought up. All that is very disheartening, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, let's let her and then you.
Hi.
Hi.
Ms. Carrie Treco. I think the issue that a lot of people have is the fact that he lied on his business license. And I think a lot of people would feel a lot more comfortable if maybe the business was put into a business district as opposed to residential where it is right by a school and backed up to houses. And I think that if it was in a business district where it was away from us, more away... You know, the business park, I go from Mount Prospect I'm talking about, where there is not...
Oh, yeah, like Kensington Business Center or something.
Where there's not houses and schools right there, I think that that would be a better location for it. But I think the fact that he lied, obviously, clearly, to get the license, there's got to be something that I understand is not illegal, what he's doing, but maybe where he's doing it can be pushed into a different area, somehow saying that it shouldn't be two blocks away from a school. It shouldn't be backed up to... Because there's houses right behind it.
Yeah. I think as Mr. Cassidy indicated, his exuberance got the better of him when he made the video. Let's take that at its face value, but once that video's out of the...
It's a video, but that's what the store is for, to come and play.
Right.
It doesn't matter if the video is there or not. The whole thing was, he lied on the letter that he wrote to you stating that, you know, about the point of sale and that they were just going to be there to be stored for the purpose of when he has the trade shows. There's people in there, sitting in a high chair, being said that's not what he said on the letter to you. And I think that that's an issue. If you're letting him stay, then you're letting it be okay that he lied to you about what the business is about. I think that's...
Well, if we see a trend of that, then I think we are able to bring charges and call the question his business license, and that's what we'll be looking for.
Looking at.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi. I just want to say a couple of things. My concern was over the vicinity where it is. I spoke to a lot of the Lincoln parents. I know they're graduating tonight, and a lot of people didn't want to be there having a business with big giant Legos in the window when all the kids are walking to the 7-Eleven. I think where all the people and homeowners feel, we learned about it from this man who we feel manipulated the board into getting a license to operate this place in our community. This is such a major thing that when the application was put in, it's like he played everybody here, he posted his video, and now everyone in the neighborhood is sitting, watching this video. He finds out he's got his permit, he's getting his party going there, and we're supposed to sit back and watch. Now, from a legal viewpoint, I kept on saying, "Why is this not misrepresentation?" when he filled out saying, "I'm selling like Depends." It's not about that. As soon as the video went out, then we have this "Come for your photo shoot," stuff like that. As all this talk in the neighborhood's going on via, you know, computer, this, that, and the other, then all of a sudden, whatever people complained about him, he now put the curtain around the Legos. He covered up the Legos. Now he has a camera watching us from his business versus us watching him. You got to buzz yourself in, but, I mean, there isn't even age limits. If teenagers go by there and start ringing the bell, and they get in, then what? You know, the community is really upset how backwards it all went. I just think we should have been more informed, and especially as soon as their permit was put in, because you knew where this was going. A lot of us learned a lot of things about this whole fetish thing, which, you know, you don't want to, but we just feel like, why are we finding out about it now?
Agreed.
Thank you.
One thing that you should rest assured, it certainly helps me, is Mr. Malina's... One thing that you should rest assured, it certainly helps me, is Mr. Molina's vast experience, both with federal law as well as state and local law, Mr. Cassidy's experience, and we were misrepresented to, you know, by that business plan if, in fact, he said one thing and now he plans to do another. We just need to figure out what the limits are that we can do to react to that. Ma'am?
Hi, my name's Lisa Arkin. I'm a resident of Mount Prospect, and my question is regarding the issue of the zoning and how there are, you all couldn't find anything within the business plan that you could reject based on ordinances and zoning issues. Couldn't there have been an amendment? If you say that you had investigated this business plan thoroughly, and you knew all about his intentions, the vendor's intentions, clearly you would have known what his intentions were going to be in that building. And if the ordinances could have been changed, as you said, that maybe in the future they can be, couldn't there have been a meeting to change the ordinances that are in place and make the village aware, and make the community aware of what is being proposed? And then the community can come together and say, yes, we are okay with this, or no, we are not okay with this. And what are you going to do for future businesses to ensure us, community members, that you will not be having further adult fetish businesses coming in? Or who's to say another vendor, such as like a lover's lane, brought in Mount Prospect? You know, we all have been here, and we all say that this is a family community, we all have kids, this is, there's, we had won an award a few years ago, best place to live community, so how can you ensure us that you will be looking at this vendor, you will take steps to move him properly to the business district, and ensure us that something in the future will not be brought in without us being made aware of it? And you had said, you know, about this video that's going around, you don't want to watch it, Mayor, because you don't want to unsee that. So do you want that kind of a business in our village? If you can't watch it-
What we like and what we can legally do sometimes don't come together.
So can't you amend the village laws to question businesses that are coming in?
So let me have Mr. Molina address that. He did mention, we're looking at ways to regulate unique uses on a going-forward basis, but I believe there is restrictions on what's called spot zoning, where we couldn't just make up a law just to get rid of the guy.
Right, well, there are a couple of things. I mean, as I explained, when I did look at this use, I thought ahead to think of, first of all, it's difficult to change the rules after an application has been filed. Occasionally can be done with regard to zoning matters, but typically, applications that are in the pipeline are allowed to proceed under the existing zoning laws, and new applications go under the newly passed legislation. Having said that, though, I thought about what rules could be in place that would forbid a business like this to go within the village of Mount Prospect. First of all, the business existed already. As an internet business, the business, the location of where the products were being sold out of were already within the corporate boundaries of Mount Prospect through the internet business in a residential neighborhood, not in a commercial one. So now, there was bricks and mortar, it's commercial. The wearing of these clothes for a fetish or for gaining attention itself is a type of expression. If it were obscene, it could be banned, but it's actually the diapers, and they're more modest than many swimsuits. When I looked at it, there's just, it'd be very difficult, and I thought almost impossible, to create regulations that would ban this use. Now, occasionally, there are uses that are found distasteful where you can create regulations that are, make it difficult to locate within a village. Example, tattoo parlors. Many communities don't find tattoo parlors good for commercial districts, and they try to regulate them. The village has regulated them about as much as you can by requiring medical personnel to be on-site when tattoos are administered because of the health risks associated, potential health risks associated with tattoos. That has discouraged a lot of locations or any within the corporate boundaries of Mount Prospect. But a lover's lane is difficult to say you can't have one here, and in fact, there is one on Gulf Road. Unfortunately, it's not within Mount Prospect, it's a different community, but it's there. So that's my answer. It's difficult to fashion regulations that I think what the majority of people that I, at least in the emails, and I read a good chunk of them, want, and they'd like to have a reason to ban this business from locating within Mount Prospect because of its association with a known infantilism fetish. And I, it would be difficult, and if the village were to do it incorrectly, even if it was popular, the expression is a civil right, and it's allowed to be litigated with plaintiff's attorney's fees for the prevailing party if the ordinance were to be found beyond the reach of the proper scope of the village as a local municipality. So you have to go carefully, trying to protect the interests of the spirit of the community, but also making sure that going is on firmer basis as you can when you're restricting anything that can be described as expression.
So the board with the legal team very carefully look at some sort of way to suggest or possibly even move this vendor to the industrial park instead of the residential area? Because I can look at your faces, and I can see, you wouldn't want this in your backyard. Would you feel comfortable having this vendor in your neighborhood, next to your house, next to the church or the school where your kids are going, or the street where my son and his friends are walking by? Would you all feel comfortable with that? I don't think you would. So I hope, as a village board, you will sit collectively and think together and think of a way to either have this vendor move to the industrial park and also consider vendors that are coming in the future to you, looking to open up a business, and make this a better village that we used to know a few years ago. So.
Thank you. And a location issue could be potentially dealt with by the conditional use to some extent if there were locations elsewhere that were a better, better than where the one was being sought to be placed.
Hi. Hi, my name is Tari Shower. I live on Owen Street. I just, I just wanted to say one thing. I understand everyone has their differences and their things they do behind closed doors or whatever, but I just wanted to say that you're, I'm sure everyone's looked at all the videos and all these adults here, how many kids have done it now, too? And how many seeds have we plopped into their minds? The little curiosity of all these kids now? And according to what I have read, this, whatever this condition is, or whatever these people do, occurs between the ages of 11 and 13. And I have kids between those ages, or will be. And it worries me. You just, it's just evil, and it's a little seed that has been dropped in our village. And we've all been curious, we've been checking it all out, and here, my eight-year-old is talking about it with her friends at school, not from me, but from everyone else, too. So I'm just saying, I know we can't change anything now, because we can't afford it either, probably. Mount Prospect, we have the whole pizza, I don't know, the old Town End thing, $6 million or whatever, but it just, it scares me. I'm not saying that all our kids are going to be wearing diapers, I'm just saying, now what? You know? So, that's all.
That's one of the unintended consequences of raising the concern, is now you raise the profile of the business and provide more publicity and more people looking at it than otherwise wouldn't. That's not to say you shouldn't raise the concern, but it's part of the other side of the coin when you're involved.
I mean, and as a parent, you, I mean, they talk about it, but you can say, you're a parent, and you can, you can talk to them about it, but still, you're not always with your parent, I mean, your child, you're not always there. And now there's telephones, and there's tablets, and there's computers, and they're with their friends, and they're in their groups, and some kids even have little credit cards, and they have their curiosity going. And so I'm not saying that this, but, I mean, there's TV, too. You don't have control over everything, but, and this has been around, like you said, for a while now, but this hasn't been around here.
But it, but it has. The business, the internet business was located in town-
Oh, yeah, but not-
And the public needs to also be aware that this board can't control what happens on the internet.
Well, sure. No, I'm just saying, it just now, though, exploded here. And my daughter, eight-years-old, never knew what this was.
I think most of us know what this was.
No. And, I mean, I never looked this stuff up before, and now it's like, I, you know, I'm, I know a lot more than I ever thought I would about it, so, and I'm glad I do, so I can explain what she's asking questions about. But it's important, if you have your kids asking, to be able to answer those questions. But, I don't know, it just is sad. It's, I understand, everyone has their thing, and these days you have to accept everything, but I, I just, just, I don't know.
Thank you.
Carolyn Altworth. I have a quick question. In his business plan, he ended, quote, "We would be happy to restrict entrance to our office to people who are 18 years of age or older, only if you would like." So I'm just wondering, have you made that request?
Mike?
We have not formally, but we can do that.
Can that be done?
I think that's something that we definitely should do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
What are you waiting for? Why? I mean, obviously, everybody here is upset. This is only a very small-
The business plan we got said, you have to get an appointment to go in, the doors are locked.
Okay.
So we weren't in a point to restrict the business.
There's a lot of inactivity here. There's a lot of, I- So it's all ready to- I forgot, call everybody together to vote on this? I forgot to-
No, there was no forgetting. We had no right to vote on anything here.
Okay, well, how about reading through the whole business plan and noting that that says that at the bottom? If we would like, if you would like, I will lock the door. We would like it. It's almost like, what's worse, having what we have now, or a sign that says, "You have to be 18 here," right on Northwest Highway? I don't care. At least it stops the kids from walking in the damn door.
They can't. The door is locked.
All right, well, at least black out the windows and keep all the curiosity away. Okay, all right. Well, I got up here earlier, and I was so excited to address you guys, I forgot to ask a few questions.
Okay, let's give, we had another gentleman who wanted to speak here, let's give him an opportunity first.
Okay.
So, yeah, appointment only and locked door, that's a pretty limiting factor.
You know, I just want to take a minute to stand up here in defense of the gentleman's right to his free speech, number one. Number two, there seems to be some underlying assumption that this is in some way harmful to children, and I don't really see how or why. So, I mean, if you guys are really worried about harm to your children, you should be up here complaining about McDonald's. I don't see any children going into this business being harmed.
Why? I mean, you're expressing moral outrage.
You can be morally outraged, but it's not grounds to, you know, eject some man from his right to free speech. So, that's all.
Well, thanks for raising the other side of the question. I would point out that we got emails on both sides of the issue, and this gentleman does have a right to express his opinion. Yes, sir?
Okay, I just, I had to say something now because of this. Now, I understand that what's, what they're doing inside now, or what we think they're doing inside, is not part of the business plan. The business plan was originally just storage and sales. So playing, playing-
Right, the way, the way I understood it was, in the video, he talks about photography on the, on the equipment, and that's not in the business plan.
That is not in the business plan. All right, so if it's not in the business plan, and you were lied to, Mr. Cassidy, because the rest of the board had nothing to do with this, then why aren't they being ejected from the, from the location? Why isn't their license being pulled?
Yeah, well, I can-
If they lied to the village, why aren't they getting, why aren't they getting, why isn't the village coming down on them for lying the way that they did? I don't understand this.
Mr. Molina?
It seems like very cut and dry.
Let's have Mr. Molina respond.
What happens, first of all, the business plan was submitted voluntarily. There's no, there's nothing really that, in our code, that required some sort of, where you list every possible activity you're going to use in the business. But we did get it, and I found that helpful and positive, that when Mr. Cooney asked for it, we got it. Because when I read it, it was, you know, it was something I thought that if he was willing to limit himself to that would be helpful. So if he goes beyond that, we can take the position that the business plan was part of his license, and that was why I thought we should ask for it, because if we got it, it might be useful. Having said that, too, people talked about the applicant lying or misrepresenting. The fact that there were variations from what a business does and what their business plan said, and remember, it's a business plan that wasn't strictly required by code. We would be bringing, first of all, we couldn't just eject them, they're entitled to due process. You have to do a notice of violation, provide it in the code, there's a hearing process, there's an appellate process to the circuit court, long before, and up to the appellate court, if the applicant loses and desires to further defend their right to operate before the business could be shut down. So having said that, the argument would be, they should be shut down because what their activities they're doing are at variance from what their business plan was. One of the things that a court would be concerned about as well, are those activities that are going on beyond the business plan? Are they activities that would be allowed under the code generally? So if somebody walks into Jewel, for example, and they want to take a selfie of themselves beside the beer thing, or whether they have some sort of a promotion of some stuffed animal or a stuffed, and they want to take a photo op and hold the thing up, and that, you know, and you tried to stop that, saying, "This is in your business plan, Jewel." You'd have a hard time putting Jewel out of business. And it would be here, a similar argument, where is photography illegal if it involves somebody in a diaper instead of a business suit, next to an oversized crib instead of a legally sized crib? It's not as, it's not as simple as you might.
Well, I think it's a great idea that you were able to get the business plan, even though it wasn't something that was required, but the fact that it was submitted, and it is part of their, of what they, what they submitted to the village for their license, it has to be taken into account-
Correct.
-that they misled the village.
Correct, and that's-
As far as Jewel, standing there taking selfies, you're not going to be standing in Jewel in a diaper, taking selfies of themselves in front of the shelves.
Although, ask yourself this, could somebody in a onesie, in a jewel, walking through, be arrested?
I think if they're walking through Jewel in a diaper, they'd be arrested for indecent.
Really? Without any exposure of any, you know, as opposed to, let's say, a speedo? A man in a speedo?
Okay. He would be in some places with no shoes. No shoes, no suit, no, no-
Right, but that would be not based on obscenity, it would be based on hygiene. But that's correct, there are-
Okay. All right, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Who are the owners of this business? I've read somewhere that they're 95% owned by veterans. Is that true?
We've heard some majority-based ownership by veterans.
Okay. You know, I, I hear a lot of parents that are really, really concerned, and I really do understand that. You know, protecting your children is probably your biggest responsibility in life. I don't have children, but I still was concerned when I heard about this establishment. So I did a lot of research, too, and then today I went to the, to the store, and met the owner that was in the video, in his diaper. He was fully dressed, looking very professional. The office was immaculate. That was an empty facility for a long time, and this is a multimillion, multimillion-dollar business. facility for a long time, and this is a multi-million, multimillion dollar business that's just moved into that facility. They have a, a very large online presence. They're ordering big bulk purchases from overseas. And if they wanted to be really sly, they could just do everything that they want in that facility and just not publicize it. And you could be getting more people attracted to this facility than if we work with these people. What I found out, which I thought was interesting, was 50% of their clientele are people that we would consider traumatized. PTSD sufferers is a big group. And I did not ask the owners if they were sufferers of PTSD, but they are veterans, the guys I met. And if I was going to guess, I would say they probably are individuals that have served the country and are dealing with the effects of war. So, I, I changed my opinion after I went in and talked to these people. And they were friendly. They were very open and honest. And I know a lot of people feel they lied in their application, but they actually went above and beyond what the village was even allowed to ask for. They submitted that information to you voluntarily, correct? But that, that letter that you posted online, you don't get that from any business, do you?
Some we do. Yeah, when we want to try and clarify the use.
Yeah, but they weren't required to do that. If they told you no, you couldn't have stopped their permit because they said, their application, because they said, "We don't need to do more than this."
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, we're entitled to do inquiry, to do what's called a certificate of zoning approval. Um, and, um, how far we can go is a judgment call.
Right. So, uh, all I'm saying is, I know we should protect our community, but maybe we should take a different approach. Why don't we go meet those people that are in there? They're not, they're not that guy that you saw in the video. You know, they're businessmen like other people, and they're, I have a feeling they're going to be successful. And the more we fight against them, the more publicity they're going to receive, the bigger they're going to become. And if you really want to get into a war with them, I don't think we can win. So maybe we try to befriend our enemy to, to minimize the damage. Because at the end of the day, we have no case against them. They're not doing anything. They're fully clothed. It's not sadomasochistic. Half of their, half of their, half of the people that are into eighty, uh, adult baby diaper lovers are people that are non-sexual. So it's not even, you know, I know pedophilia is a big concern, but these people actually like to pretend they're infants, literally. You know, they're not having sex with their, their diapers on. They're, they're having people feed them and act like a baby. So I think we might want to, you know, we started out with a prayer for our soldiers. Maybe we should think about that a little bit, and maybe these are people that are hurting a lot of them, and that's why they're acting like this. So, that's all I got to say.
That's very insightful. This certainly demonstrates the complexity of the issue. It's not a clear black and white situation.
I do.
Okay, I think we've heard a lot of, um, concerns expressed in a, in a number of different ways, but they all kind of boil down to, we're reacting to something we're unfamiliar with, and we find kind of icky. Um, a lot of reasons for why this store is where it is. Um, we've indicated we'll look at what we can do in our zoning ordinances that would empower us to look at future buildings coming through. We will be monitoring this business. Quite frankly, if they wanted to serve beer while they were there, it'd be a whole lot easier. We could deny them a liquor license and they'd be out. We don't have a nice, clear-cut mechanism here for what we do. So, we know your concern brought you out here. Um, we know the Lincoln parents are graduation, and we probably would have had a lot more folks here, uh, but for that factor. Um, your input is on video. We have it. We can review it again. But I think we're going to take all of this, um, into our judgment and as we assess our options going forward. As several of you pointed out, we have to be very careful. The last thing we end up needing is another multimillion dollar lawsuit, okay? And we just got to figure out the way to do this properly. So, I'm wondering if any of the trustees at this point have anything they wish to add to the conversation? Trustee Rogers?
I just wanted to say that it's my understanding that they are going to keep the windows blocked. The door will be locked, uh, and that you must be 18 or older to enter the space. Um, they've agreed that those Lego blocks in the window, um, might attract children, uh, and so that, that's why they've put up the sheets. So, we're going to request that they keep the windows blocked, that the doors be locked at all times. You can only enter by appointment, or you must be at least 18 years old to enter. So, uh, we're, we are trying our best, even though this is distasteful, uh, to many of us, including myself, uh, at the same time, they have the legal right to be there. So, that's where we stand.
I just have one second. Um, you, it was mentioned-
I was trying to-
It was mentioned that this is a multimillion dollar business, thanks to, to the internet. Now that it's a brick and mortar store, if you will, um, does the village see any of that? Um, how does that work? Will-
We're going to look at that. We have to determine where the point of sale is. You know, is it here, or is it the warehouse where the stuff is stored? So, that's definitely a thought we had, and, and we'll look into that.
We, we confirm the sales tax from the retail sales that happen within the store, come to the village, but they have a fulfillment, a number of fulfillment centers across the country, and those point of sales, you know, don't find their way back.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks for asking that. Okay, so, as I indicated, there's no action we can take tonight. There's no closure for you, I'm sure, but this dialogue was really, really important. Trustee Hofer?
Just to clarify a couple of things. Mr. Molina?
Yes.
The, the idea of the business plan, that was, I mean, that we got it, that was a good thing. But I'm not clear whether we can strictly hold them to their business plan. I mean, business plans change.
Correct. It would be, it would, that's a, it would be difficult unless we had a separate argument as to what was outside the business plan was not allowed in the district. Having said that, I mean, the, the residents who brought up the concept of, they made representations, I think, is, is significant, and staff, that's why they met, uh, at the site today, uh, was to, uh, is to suggest that the business owner do what he said he was going to do, and that would give the village, uh, a greater ability to, to deal with it, I, I guess. And, and I think that was fundamentally agreed to today. Now, I'm not saying that, you know, there, people can have different impressions on whether they'll follow up, but we intend to attempt to hold them to the plan by terms of an agreement.
So the idea of coming and playing, the idea of photo shoots, that wasn't in the initial plan?
Correct.
Would that be illegal in the space?
A photography store, you know, is allowed in the use. It's not, they aren't really selling it. It would be, it would be difficult to say that violates some law with, of the village, or state, or federal, anything else.
And for an adult to come there and play, is that illegal?
I think so.
No, not if they're, I mean, they were, you know, we're assuming they're clothed and-
Okay.
I think that might call the question, that the use is different than what is, uh, they proposed.
Okay.
That sort of, like, entertainment sort of venue would, would require a different set of-
Potential component we could look at, yes. If it's entertaining, entertainment.
I just, what I don't want to do is give people the false impression that those two items, should they violate, should somebody see, you know, a flash going off that, oh, there we got them?
No, and I tried to, I tried to make that clear, that the expectations should not be considered-
Right.
...based, because we would have to make the staff, Mr. Cassidy would have to make an independent judgment on the resources we would commit to a business license violation, because again, they're entitled to due process. Um, and we would have to assess our likelihood of success on the merits, not only in an administrative proceeding, but in front of a Cook County Circuit Court judge, where it's almost certainly going to go. And as we know, those two things are not always the same.
So short of a business being illegal, um, and like Ted, two parlors years ago, I remember we put the ordinance into place, and you said that they had, pardon me, medical personnel on site.
Correct.
Um, do we have a list of businesses that we don't allow in town?
No, and in fact, you can't disallow any business that would be legal. So if somebody wanted to open a prostitution store, they can ban it. But if someone, you know, wants to open an adult use, where this could, I, in my opinion, this isn't an adult use, even based on, on what's occurring. But if there were, you couldn't say adult uses are banned. You can create, create them a special use, and you can limit them to very, very limited areas, and then acquire a public hearing and have to listen to all the people. They'd have to listen to all the people's opposition, and, and ultimately would have to be willing to litigate the issue, which tends to push those operations to a path of least resistance. Um, and, and, you know, here, though, I don't think it would qualify as an adult use. We'd have to look at some of the, you know, potential, um, attraction issues that were raised and say, "Well, this is a key retail area." But there would have to be, the standards would have to be spelled out in the ordinance. And then, as part of a special use or conditional use process, location could be, which I think some of the residents were saying would be helpful, uh, could be addressed in a meaningful way.
Okay, so, just to make it clear, it's not as easy as preparing a list of businesses that you find distasteful, or you don't like, or whatever, just creating a list and saying, "Okay." And you can't think of every business, obviously, uh, because no one's come around. Someone caught us, uh, by surprise, wouldn't have even thought of this one in a million years. But the fact that we might find it distasteful, or, you know, whatever, we can't just put it on a list and say we don't allow it. It has to be illegal, or it has to have some, some conditional use associated with it that we could pass judgment on.
Right. So that's why I said in my opening remarks, that I looked at not only the existing ordinances, but sometimes ordinances don't catch up with current practice. So I, right away, I analyzed, "Well, could we have an ordinance that would have banned this?" I tried to go through that exercise, and even if it's closing the barn door after the horse is out, can we close the door? And I don't think we, we could have. So I don't think that you can, the board can look at and say, "Well, we should have been ahead of the game on this." This kind of use is something that could happen. And as I said, the sales, the, the business was in town, in a residential district.
Trustee Hofer, what I would add too, is what I'm hearing from many of our stakeholders is, it, they would have preferred a more public process for this. So, uh, in my experience, there have been zoning provisions that allow to capture unique uses and make them conditional uses. So at least, uh, in the case of, uh, this business that doesn't fall neatly within to the permitted use categories or, or special use categories, it would come through that process, and no one would be surprised that the business is open, because it would be-
So it would become before the public body?
Right.
And the public at large.
Correct. And so we've been strengthening the zoning ordinance over the last couple months. We have additional amendments that we're bringing forward in the next 30 days. This will be one of them. So at least we can, uh, offer the board, that is a suggestion. So we're, you know, kind of advancing the notion of greater transparency in the future.
Thank you.
Okay, so trustee Secatelli, and then we'll go to trustee Zadel.
Um, I went in to first. Thank everyone for coming out tonight, um, and the constructive dialogue that you all had with us. Um, and I'm glad that we're going to look at the zoning code going forward, because it should be a living, breathing document, um, as times change. So must the code. Um, and I think that's something that we should get out of it, um, is to have a monthly report of businesses that are applying or opening. I think it's important that the board knows, um, the businesses that are coming to town, um, we're the biggest cheerleaders for the town. So I think it's important that we know the business climate, um, so that we can, you know, we're, we're working on economic development of the downtown and other areas. So if we know the businesses that are here, we can kind of think of other ones that might work well together, um, and it will just increase our knowledge, um, and participation in the process.
Thank you. Trustee Zadel?
I also would like to thank those who've come out tonight, um, not only for your participation, but for the civilness of the discourse that you brought forward. I know that this is a sore spot with many people, particularly parents who live near this location. And, um, you were quite able to express your opinion without having to resort to, um, any kind of yelling or, or anything like that. I, it's greatly appreciated. It's greatly appreciated. It's much easier for us to work our way through these issues if people come before us in a very civil manner. And I, I greatly appreciate that. I can't emphasize that enough. I think one of the things that I, my heart goes out to the folks who, with children, who ask questions and you have to explain things. And this is not the first thing, I'm sure, that you've had to explain. I've had questions from my 12-year-old grandson that I wasn't sure I was prepared to answer, about things that were going on around, around town, around the area that, that he learns of, he discerns. It's amazing what young children know and what they pick up on. And, um, certainly issues with regard to, um, District 11, uh, 211, the high school district, uh, with the, with the transgender issues. There's just so many things that come up today that is one more burden on a parent to explain to a child. Um, I appreciate the, the lady who came up and said she did research on this, so that she would be able to answer those questions. But that's just an extra burden that it puts on you. That being said, um, as, as you've all heard, right now, there's been no illegal activity, and I don't know that we can anticipate any illegal activity. That doesn't mean it can't be inspected and monitored, just like every other business in town is. Um, and I, you know, I think we can do that without any act of discrimination towards the business. Um, that's certainly a, a very, very narrow line that we have to tread, but I think that we will move forward with it. I can say for sure that you've made us very aware of your concerns, and, um, and it gives us the ability to take a look and take every step that we can to try and minimize, uh, any impact that this, this business may have. So, thank you.
Great, thanks. So trustee Matuzian's hand?
Trustee Pollitt. Uh, trustee Zadel, very well said. Thank you for your comments there. We live in a society where rules are changing and the game is changing. We all see it. It doesn't always rub us the right way. Um, we see the Department of Justice work very diligently in protecting the rights of transgenders, kind of ignoring, in my opinion, my personal opinion, the rights of others. So I can understand where everybody's coming through on this issue. Um, engaging any type of litigation is expensive. It's expensive as a community, and expensive from, uh, the other side as well, of course. And we're up here as trustees, we're looking at the community. We're looking what's always with the best interest of the community. And putting the community at risk to expensive litigation is never in our best interest. So we're sensitive to those issues, and we don't want to go down that path. Um, with that said, I, you know, firstly, I don't understand why he would set the business up in town, middle of downtown. It does seem more appropriate off in a corner somewhere. Um, but that's his business decision. I do want to thank everybody for coming out. I want to thank you for your civil discussion as well. It was very much appreciated. We'll be looking at the zoning laws, and if there's things that we need to do, um, in the future, prevent the growth of this type of activity or business, I'm sure we'll take those actions. Now again, thank you for your participation.
Thanks. Trustee Pollitt?
I want to thank anybody that's here tonight, anybody at home, because we got tremendous amount of emails in regards to this. And I'm in town a lot with my business, and talked to a lot of people at different businesses, was in, when I was around here and there. People that called me on the phone and let me know about this issue. It's very tremendous from the standpoint of the community involvement and where they live, and that what makes this community such a great place. And I'm really glad that we have so many people giving us this input. But I have to comment that when this first hit, when the people saw the YouTube video, the number of hits on the website was 67. And tonight, as we sit here, it's over 14,000. So as we ask our friends to look at this and see how terrible I feel it is, is how he represented what he wanted to do, which might have been a little bit aggressive in his mind, because he was excited about opening a business. Us putting more hits on it just moves it further and further into the realm of other people seeing it, and other companies saying, "Wow, this guy must have a really good business. Maybe we should put some items on consignment into his business." So we have to be careful, as the mayor said. I think the mayor took the right approach. She doesn't- She doesn't want to see it, not only because of that reason, but it's just another count of somebody else that looked at it, and you don't know whether it's somebody that's against it, or somebody that's for it, it's just a count that's seen the YouTube video. And I think it's important for us to be aware, and it is a double-edged sword, and I think we're pretty much in agreement from one side of the board to the other, that we are going to deal with this, that we're going to know how to do this in the future. It caught everyone by surprise, but I think we have had the backing for years of the residents, and we're a very conservative board, and I'm glad that you're holding our feet to the fire on this issue, and I think we will respond properly to this and do the best that we can in the culture that we're in to solve this problem. So I thank you for all being here and everyone at home watching this tonight.
Okay, so there was no action item here, this was put forth as a community dialogue. We wanted to make sure we got this dialogue out in the open as quickly as possible, this was our first opportunity. So we want to thank you for coming in. As you've heard, there'll be some proposed changes to the zoning ordinances coming forward. Hopefully, this can be dealt with, with the business going forward. We're going to continue to talk with the business owners and try to make them as unobtrusive as possible. They are not a walk-in-off-the-street kind of a business model to begin with, so, you know, we'll try to deal with those concerns, and hopefully, this will be our first and last foray into this kind of a situation. So I'm going to call for a brief recess to allow our audience to leave, we'll take a quick break up here, and we'll reconvene to conduct the rest of the business on the agenda in five minutes.